Want to fall asleep?
You good?
There you go.
Get started. All right. Welcome tonight, Public Caucus, Dan Steffick, Matt Damonis.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us.
You're going to give us an update on our
2023 audit.
Our audit and whenever you want to start.
All right, thank you for having us tonight. We appreciate your time. So we'll just go through a brief PowerPoint presentation, give a brief update to as far as the audit progress goes for the 2023 audit. So kind of just a brief overview of the slide deck here. I will go over all the parties' responsibilities in regards to the audit, review the timeline and some key dates regarding the audit, discussion of fraud and other risks that we are required to have with governance. So briefly just touch on the responsibilities of the parties involved for the audit this year. So we'll start with the City of Scranton. So governance or city council responsible for organizational oversight, strategic direction, transparent decision-making, accountability, including financial reporting, and to ensure the future admission of the city. Management is responsible for day-to-day decisions, internal controls and accounting policies, any management decisions, fair presentation of the financial statements, and finally, programs in place to prevent and detect fraud. And then CLA, as the independent auditor, we are responsible for an opinion on the fair presentation of the financial statements, an audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards as well as government auditing standards, reasonable, not absolute assurance, an understanding of the city's internal control structure, and a risk-based audit approach. So as part of our meeting here today, we're just required to have some communications with city council just in regards to the audit timing, our risks that we've noted in our planning of the audit, and significant matters as part of the audit itself. So these next couple of slides, we'll just touch on that at a high level. If anybody has any questions, please feel free to stop me at any point during the presentation as well. So we'll go over an overview of the scope and deliverables of the audit this year. So it'll be an audit of the financial statements as of and for the year ending December 31st, 2023. On those financial statements, we will be providing the auditor's report where we give our opinion on the financial statements. We determine if they're fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and are materially accurate. The second item is a report on internal control over financial reporting and a report on compliance on each major federal program. So what this this report gets into is the federal programs that the city receives. So for instance, the ARPA program, CDBG Home, et cetera. So we we audit those programs in accordance to requirements that are put out by the federal government. The third item is the government's communication letter. So at the end of the audit, we essentially provide a summary sheet of all the procedures that we performed and any significant findings as part of the audit. So that will be provided to city council in conjunction with the final reports. And then finally, a management letter if required. So if we have any internal controls or any procedures that we feel like can be improved that don't reach the level of a finding, we will provide those in a management letter, just mainly just offer potential opportunities for improvement is what that is in more layman's terms. This slide here gets a little bit into the timeline. So today is our planning meeting, so to speak, but that's really not completely accurate as we've already started the audit way back in March this year. So we've got a good, I would say, at least two-month jump on where we were at this point in time last year. So we're definitely ahead of schedule as far as that that goes this year. So our audit planning process, that is now continuous. We are in touch with Matt, Tom Rainey, Eileen, the whole finance team here at Scranton. Throughout the year, we're at least in touch, I would say, every week, if not sooner, talking about audit issues, how we can plan the audit to operate more efficiently. So we had our preliminary field work. That took place in April and May. We got a lot of our audit test work done in that timeframe. Our final field work, that is going on now. We have some final wrap-up items to take care of. It's going to go through our detail review process as well. So right now, we're waiting on the OPEB report and then we're evaluating some of the new GASB standards that are impacting the city this year. So we're hoping to have a resolution on all those, hopefully by the end of the month, if not early August. And then once we get into August, September, that's going to enter our final recording phase where we prepare the financial statements of the city and then it goes through CLA's internal review process. But we feel at this point in time that we shouldn't have any issues hitting the September 30th deadline. We feel like we have a good handle on things as far as that goes and we have a good plan in place to to take care of any of the remaining items that are out there. As part of this meeting here tonight, we're required to communicate with everyone here the significant risks that we've noted as part of our audit planning process. So the first one, and this is not unique to the City of Scranton by any means. This is a required risk for all audits. It's the management override of controls. So what that means is it refers to the ability of management to either influence or alter any of the processes in place or transactions or controls that are put in place at the city and override those controls. So kind of one of the things that we do to help mitigate that process, we test a substantial amount of journal entries that the city makes. We will look at any significant transactions that are that are more of the extraordinary nature, any transactions with related parties, things of that nature, items of large dollar amounts, et cetera, just to make sure that, you know, we try to mitigate this risk as much as possible. The second significant risk is improper revenue recognition. So what that boils down to basically is that we want to make sure that revenue is recorded in the proper period, that it's not being either pulled forward into 2023 or put off into 2024 to misstate the books. And then finally, the third significant risk is the implementation of new GASB standards. So there's two major standards that are potentially impacting the city this year. The first one is GASB 96 for subscription-based IT arrangements. This is very similar to the lease standard that was adopted last year. So basically, any IT arrangement that the city has that's longer than a 12-month period, we have to evaluate those and make sure that, you know, there's no liability that needs to be recorded for those as part of the process. And then another standard that's potentially impacting the city this year is GASB 94. This one is also similar to leases, but it's a larger scope. It gets into public-private partnerships. So this one actually goes all the way back to the service concession agreement that the city has with the Parking Authority. So for this one, we're evaluating if any sort of asset or receivable or potential liability needs to be recorded as part of that process. But with GASB 94, the whole purpose of that is to help keep the financial records clear whenever governments enter into these complex agreements, basically so that everyone knows what's going on with any public assets and funds. So it's essentially a rulebook for keeping score in a game where public services and infrastructure are managed by different players that are outside of the city. Some other areas of significance we identified this year as part of our planning process. So on the statement of financial position or the balance sheet, if you will, cash and investments. So there's a large amount of investments in the pension plan. We audit those to make sure that those values are presented fairly. Leases and subidas, we already kind of briefly touched on those. We just want to make sure that those are recorded properly and that the populations over those are complete. Bonds and notes payable. And finally, the retirement and OPEB plans of the city. Those are pretty significant liabilities. So we do some pretty extensive testing on those areas as well. And then on the statement of activities or the income statement, some areas of significance there, tax revenues, fees for services, federal grants, especially including the American Rescue Plan funds as there's a lot of scrutiny on those. And then operating expenses, bond payments, program expenses, salary and benefits. Those are some of the higher-dollar areas on the expense side. And then a few other areas of significance. Any individually significant or non-recurring transaction, that's something that we're going to want to look at and pull the detail for. Really get an understanding of the purpose of that, to make sure it's recorded properly. And this gets back to what we talked about with the management override of controls. We want to make sure that everything's on board with those transactions. Update our understanding of the internal control environment. One thing we like to do here at CLA, we use a lot of data analytics on large volumes of data so we could pull all the transactions that the city had throughout the year, run it through our software, and it really gives us a lot of insight on some potential areas that we want to maybe want to look at a little bit deeper. Also, we perform unpredictability procedures. So every year, we like to pull in different procedures that we did in the prior year just so that the cities not necessarily, they don't know what to expect in some ways, just to make sure that we're checking out fresh areas and a fresh approach. And then finally, the single audit major program testing. We are testing five major programs this year. So it will be the ARPA funds, CDBG, Home, ESG, and the FEMA grant received for flooding in 2023. So that basically that covers approximately 90% to 92% of the city's federal funds that they receive, which is quite a bit, frankly. The federal government only requires 40% to 50% typically. So we're getting a lot of assurance over the city's federal funds. All of our testing to this point, we have not noted any compliance issues. So that's some very positive news to report there as well. Any questions on the risk assessment process or any areas of significance? In this slide here, we'd just like to remind you, as your independent auditors, we work for city council and work with management to accomplish the audit. We're all in this together, this collective group here, management, city council, CLA. We're all working together to get to the same point. So if at any point during the process, we certainly welcome your input. If there's any concerns that you have regarding processes at the city, our areas of risk assessment, our audit plan and approach, any transactions like that throughout the year, please feel free to reach out to us and we will certainly incorporate that into our audit planning. And then finally, another area that's impacting the city this year, there was actually a new auditing standard that was put in place. It's SaaS number 145, Understanding the Entity and Its Environment and Assessing the Risks of Material Mistatement. So really, this one boils down to they're trying to modernize the auditing standards to really take into account the amount of how prevalent the IT environment is throughout government audits. The processes, they're much more ingrained than they used to be even 10 years ago, the scope of IT systems and things of that nature. So it's really just trying to take into account how the business environment has changed over the last couple of years. So what it really boils down to, we're going to spend a lot more time evaluating controls, especially controls over the IT processes at the city. We're going to, we have additional specialists that are coming on board this year to really dig in and evaluate those controls. And, you know, it's really, the main thing here is just make sure that, you know, all the IT processes at the city are working well. It really helps to potentially find any areas of fault where, you know, cybersecurity could be an issue or processes are not operating as they should. Does anyone have any questions at this point in time that we could answer?
So there was a few findings from last year that came out of OECD and also the Scranton Parking Authority. Those, the OECD findings, they had deadlines for action plans on those. Have they all been settled? And how about the Scranton Parking Authority?
Yes, so in regards to the corrective action plan, we worked together with the city to put that together. We agreed on some deadlines there and at this point in time, those have all been resolved in regards to the OECD findings. And then in regards to the Scranton Parking Authority, that one, the city, the Parking Authority, I should say, they went out and did engage with another independent accounting firm to get an audit this year. They have not had one in the past. So that finding as well is going to be resolved.
Yeah, I could give you an update on all those because there's the three authorities. And as Dan mentioned, the Parking Authority is underway. And really, they're pretty much done. And as Dan mentioned about the GASB 94, going back to the 2016 concession, their evaluation and being that the SPA has not had an audit, they're kind of at the same point. So they're kind of working together and with us to try and resolve that, but pretty much, it's pretty much done. So once that gets done, that'll go to the board for the approval. The Sewer Authority audit is pretty much done too. We've received a copy of that and Dan's taken a look at it, looked at it, so we sent it back to revision. So that is, that one was always late, as you remember. We had that done. So I'm working with Attorney Durkin to get that onto either their next meeting in August or a special meeting before then. And the redevelopment authority audit is pretty much completed too and that's expected to be in front of their board in August too. And I did ask to see if they can have a special meeting and get that done in July. So we're in much better position with the three authority audits that are component units that are required in our audit this year than what we were last year. And that will cure the Parking Authority adverse opinion that we always get, you know. We reached out, you know, this has been going on since, I reached out today, I think in February, and stayed on them pretty much every month. And they've all worked, all the auditors and the personnel at the authorities have been very helpful to get us to this point.
And once that audit is completed by the Parking Authority, we should never see that again?
The adverse opinion, yeah, that should be pretty much, yeah.
Correct, yeah. That was an opinion modification in the past just due to the fact that they didn't have an audit.
Yeah.
So that will go away. And that frankly, that's, anytime you have a modified opinion, that does kind of raise some, you know, concerns from people looking at it. So that's a positive step.
Dan, I realize you're not complete with the audit yet, but at this point, do you expect any major findings or red flags that you're seeing in this audit?
So we have not noted any major red flags at this point in time. As far as findings go, nothing new from this year. We did have the finding in the past over the Special Cities Fund. That really hasn't had a chance to be remedied yet. So that will still continue this year. But going forward, I think that's one that can be resolved as well. But we have not noted any compliance issues or any internal control findings at this point in time. If that is the change over the course of our kind of final audit procedures, if you will, we'll certainly communicate that with everybody in the room here.
And it's your expectation that the audit will be completed by September 30th?
Yes, I feel like we have a really good plan in place this year. As long as the OPEB report comes in as scheduled, I don't anticipate any issues on our end with completion of the audit in a timely fashion.
Thank you.
I don't think so this year. It's kind of the major roadblocks in the past have been a lot of the component unit audits. And as Matt had just pointed out, those are in a really good place. We've received information from the Pension Actuary, Foster and Foster. So that's typically an area that can be a holdup as well. OPEB, it's a little bit delayed this year, but from my understanding, they are close to wrapping up the report. So once we have that report in hand, we'll go through our audit procedures over that information. And, you know, that should only take us, I would say, a week to 10 days to get through that. So I think we're in a really good spot.
And that was another one. We started that process way back at the end of February, pulled together the HR and Foster and Foster, the actuaries had a meeting and they gave us a list of items and started plugging away on that. And speaking with Foster and Foster, they, this became their front burner issue on the end of June. So there's been a lot of communication back between HR personnel and Foster and Foster. I've seen the emails, I get CC'd on them the last two weeks. And pretty close, I think, from what I get from Foster and Foster, they're pretty close to getting to the end of their questions, which is a good thing. When I talked to Foster and Foster at the end of June, you know, I told them what our target was, try and get this done in September and what we wanted to do. So they know what our schedule is and they're trying to work with that because once they get done with their field work then they have to go through their internal review process kind of like with Dan does. When he gets done, they go through, he passes it off to someone else. They have to pass it off. So we're hopeful by the end of July to have, if not sooner, the OPEB, the GASB 75 done, which is all the healthcare. Last year was easier because in between years, you know, it's the bi-annual evaluation. It was, you just had to roll it. But this year, it goes right into the detail and all the census data for all the retired personnel, healthcare and everything. So it's a lot of dependence and it's a lot of information. But HR has been involved and really the whole city staff, it's not just the BA's office, has been back and forth. You know, we've done a lot of work. OECD with Melissa Sattlemeyer. As Dan mentioned, IT Director Jack Rieger with the GASB 96, this subscription-based IT agreements. And now going through the internal audit that he has, his part does, this is completely separate. Even in the law, you know, they had to do the litigation. So it affects the whole administration. Everybody gets a little bit of a part of this. And Tom Rainey's been involved, helping us and OECD has been instrumental part, you know, he has the history on this. So I just want to let you know, like, this has really been a process, really has started. Seven or eight meetings we've had, bi-weekly meetings with Dan touching base, going through that checklist of items that he has priorities and every week, what's the priority this week? What's the priority this week? So we try and knock them all off. And I will say, it's been, it's been great working with the staff. And everybody's been given this, everything they have. But it takes time, like I said, there's a lot of balls to juggle and trying to get everything communicated back to people and misunderstandings in communication on information that was needed. But there's been, I think the key to your question this year has really been communication. You know, there's, I've always kept people talking to each other and whenever there's been a roadblock or a slowdown, I shoot an email and it's just been working really good. And everybody communicated back and forth. And I think that was really the stumbling block in the last several years that has gone on here. Because the Parking Authority is a perfect example. When we brought this up to the attorney, what was it? I can't, Todd Johns, last August, that, you know, what he gave us submitted is not going to be, is not legitimate, it's not acceptable. He's like, nobody ever told me this in the city. I've been sending this for five years. And so it's just more of the communication getting out. And I think that's the key this year is really just everybody getting together and coordinating and getting this to where we're at today. As Dan said, we're probably two months ahead of where we were last year.
I would say at least.
Just to report on the authorities, you know, the authorities have been working hand-in-hand this year.
I'm glad to hear that because you know, the young lady sitting right behind you will be watching.
Hey, you realize this will be the first audit since 2002?
She'll be watching.
That would be a lot of time. I mean, my heart monitor is going to beep.
And we try, you know, like I say, you're dealing with a lot of, as I mentioned, all these people, there's a lot of human aspect in this. And so that's, you know, when you're dealing with a lot of human beings, it's a lot of issues come up. And so, but we try and work them through when they come up and we keep, as you say, the ball moving forward.
To Matt's point too, I would add, there's a lot of coordination that goes into an audit. They're much more all-encompassing than they ever used to be, even frankly with the additional scope that a lot of these new GASBs have really brought on. But I feel like I work with a lot of government agencies, municipalities, et cetera. I do feel like the level of coordination here this year has been very good. I feel like everybody's working together and working towards a common goal. So it's actually really, it's really a good thing to see from where I sit. So I would just like to add that as well.
So you discussed, the only piece that we're really waiting on is the OPEB, right? From Foster and Foster.
Yeah, that's probably the big-ticket item that's out there.
And they've been working through all their information in a timely manner?
Yeah, so it's not uncommon, as Matt pointed out, in a valuation year, that process does take a little bit longer. So we've had this discussion for months now. So on our end, it's been nice that we've had this level of communication. We can plan our resources accordingly. So when we expect this report to come in, we can shift resources to take care of it quickly and efficiently.
When it comes, just maybe briefly explain. So we have Rainey and Rainey, we have Foster and Foster, we have yourself and the city. Could you just give me like a rundown of that relationship and how that works?
Sure, so we'll start with Foster and Foster. So those are actuaries engaged by the city. They're specialists in providing those actuarial calculations that they need to come up for the OPEB plan and the various pension plans at the city. Rainey and Rainey, their role is more as an audit prep role. So they help with a lot of the closing entries at year end, providing, supporting documentation over those. They work a lot with the leases and subidas that came out in the last couple of years. I'd say that's probably their main role. And then our role as the independent auditors, we kind of put it all together, if you will. So we compile all that information from the city, Rainey and Rainey, the actuaries, et cetera. We do an audit over that information to make sure that it's all materially accurate and that the controls in place are operating effectively. And then at the end, we put together the audit report where your financial statements are in there. So that's kind of our role, if you will, in a high level.
Thank you. You talked about that possibility of that one finding with the Special Cities Fund. That, you also talked about getting that into OpenGov. At this point in time, maybe Matt could answer this a little bit better. The reason that that's not in the system yet is because it's the last piece we're getting to and it will eventually be in the system? Or what's the reasoning for that?
Yeah, I'm not, I have to check with Eileen on where she's at and with Jack on that, but I know that's part of it. but I know that's part of it. And I know we're working out with OpenGov because I gave them the project for the Capital Reserve Spending Plan, so just like they did with the, I think it was the ARPA or the OECD, putting them into OpenGov. We're trying to get the capital reserves set because that's going to be effective as of January 1st, and we're working on that, and we're, I digress into the capital budget now, we're preparing that. But, you know, and this year, under the ordinance, we have to have a capital spending plan along with the budget. You know, you always get the budget has five years. Now we have an actual spending plan where you'll be spending, the city will be spending the capital expenses from this year and not the general, or the operating budget. So that has to be up into OpenGov. We have a bank account open with PNC, but we can't really do any transactions until we can get that set up. So that's, that's, in my opinion, is the hot plate for OpenGov right now because we want to get that going. We don't want to be able not to spend money on capital projects come January 1st.
And then when it comes to that, that fund, about how much money is in that section, in that Special Cities Fund?
Special Cities? I'd have to ask the accountants upstairs, I don't, they, Jim, we have Jim Greenfield and Andy Marichak are the ones who pretty much control. I don't get into the, that part. I leave the accountants do the work down there in detail, and I stay up here and kind of oversee them and manage, kind of like, so, I'm a lawyer. I always say I'm a lawyer by training, I'm not an accountant, so I try not to trespass too far down into that part. When I have those questions, I go to them and they give me their answers. That's the way I work with them on that. Makes sense?
Yeah. Now, you brought up some of the authorities, so the Redevelopment Authority, about how much money goes through the Redevelopment Authority yearly?
Well, I don't, I have to take a look at their audit, but...
I think it's in the neighborhood, I don't want to speak offhand, but I think it's in the neighborhood of two, two and a half million.
I would say a couple million, I remember, yeah. And then, you know, the Sewer Authority is pretty much nothing because they don't have anything, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else? Well, Matt, I know my first question to you at every finance meeting is, how are our authorities, are they keeping us updated? And thank you for reaching out and communicating with them, because I know that was always a problem, and that always held us back, but they're on schedule now.
Yeah, I mean, I say, we're trying, and, you know, last year we had the target, but we got delayed by the outside sources. But I think we got a lot of it under control this year, and, you know, we keep our fingers crossed, you know? And it's good to have targets and goals, you know, it keeps us in line, and, you know, you try and meet them. If not, we adjust whatever happens, you know, we always, we manage through whatever issues come up, and we get through. I appreciate the time and giving you guys the update too.
All right, thank you very much, and have a good evening. Thanks.
Thank you.